It is 5:30 PM. And I would ask the Secretary, first of all, call the meeting order and ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross.
Here.
Sharon Jackson.
Yes.
Keith Lee. Tim Lusher.
Here.
William May.
Here.
Daryl Sanderson. Charles Stewart.
Here.
Frank Swager.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Forum of the A.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Um, let's see, next item would be approval of the minutes from January 12th, 2023.
Uh, move to approve the minutes.
Senator.
Move back Commissioner Lusher. Second back Commissioner, uh...
Wright.
Wright. Brain's going slow.
It's all right.
Any questions, discussion? CNN, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Mr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Chairman May.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Next item would be motion to approve payment of bills unless there's questions.
So move second.
Move back Commissioner Cross, second back Commissioner Boggs. All right, any discussion? CNN, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Chairman May.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Russell Wright.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are approved. Next item would be staff items. I would call on staff to present the staff items, one and two.
Sure. You can have a buddy. Um, for a brief update on the comp plan, um, we have continued moving along. Our last advisory committee meeting, the topic was community facilities, so we shared some of that information, had a good discussion with the advisory committee about both that and then just generally speaking, um, the process we were going through. Um, so now, uh, it's a bit of, you know, we're getting to kind of an exciting part, I think, that everybody's been waiting for. Um, we've just in the last week or so started to get some draft content from the consultant to, uh, react to and then to bring to the next advisory committee, um, uh, which future land use will be the topic of. And so we'll introduce, um, initially the future land use designations, so those descriptions of the land use categories, share that with the group, get feedback, um, and then come back at the next meeting, um, and actually begin looking at the map itself. So, um, that next advisory committee meeting is on the 21st of February. We do have scheduled a, a steering committee meeting next Wednesday to update the steering committee about the process and, and where we are and all that, but, um, uh, that's, that's essentially the update. Um, and I think it'll be good, uh, for both the community and the advisory committee, and I know staff's, you know, ready. We all, you know, have been going through all the months of input and, and, and listening and open houses and events like that, and it's good to finally say, you know, give me something to react to, let's start working on this thing. So that's the phase that we're about to begin, um, so, ready to get started.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission have any questions for...
One question, Mr. Chair.
I do. Are you gonna, y'all have got anything out?
Let's go back to the next, uh, Mr. Jackson and then completely start. I don't know.
When would we begin to discuss or receive, uh, the proposed goals and objectives?
The commission specifically?
Yeah.
We, the, what we've talked about, so statute requires the goals and objectives specifically to have its own public hearing. What I've talked about with Ed, um, and on our project calendar would be, um, that as we get closer to the end, we would, we would do that closer to the same time we do the rest of the plan. So...
How would that then impact the, uh, the new land use map and et cetera if we haven't established goals and objectives that we can coalesce around? How can the consultants do the proposed land use?
So the goals and objectives have already begun to be drafted, and then we're using that advisory committee, which as you know, we formed to help us with that content piece and vet that language. And so that's ongoing with the other language, um, as we vet the entire document, um, to bring that ultimately, once the advisory committee essentially gives its blessing to the document and the language contained within it, and then the next step would be to bring it to the commission for, for you all's review and approval.
Okay.
Do you have any further...
Yeah, I have to have a question.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Wright.
Okay. Uh, it's just gonna be a, this kind of a housekeeping thing. Will that be a Zoom meeting, onsite meeting for the steering committee? How, how do you plan to do that?
Uh, the steering committee, we advertise as a Zoom meeting again. That's worked well for us in the past because we're just kind of conducting business.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll be sending a meeting link out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other members?
All right, thank you very much. Next item is the presentation acceptance of the Frankfurt Franklin County Planning Commission audit for the calendar year 2022. I know we've got Mr. McLavick here to answer any questions.
Good to see you all. I'm sure you all have read this. Um, I will do my very best to be brief. Pretty much just like it was last year, except the city and county funded you more, and you also spent about $98,000 on consulting services, which you all know, uh, bills were presented and, uh, you know, you have cash in the bank. Um, you had a, I say you had a loss this year, but, you know, you were going to with the spending some of your cash on the consultant. So you spent 40, 48,000. Your total expenses were 103,000, sorry. Um, you charged $16,000 for services, flats, plots, fees, more than the previous year, but you also got almost $50,000 from the city and the county. So, um, change in net position because of your funding was about $10,000. So that's good. Like I said, you know, you're completely funded from, with fees and then mostly from the city and county. So, um, I'd like to thank Vicki and staff for putting everything together. It's not a whole lot to it, but fortunately you all have to have an audit, so, um, really the first five pages are management's discussion hours, just numbers that are from the back and you all can read that, sort of like a quick synopsis. But the main thing is, we issued a clean opinion like we have in the past, and as a mission, that's what you always want to know about.
Mr. Chair, any members have any questions? Mr. Jackson.
Got two. Uh, Mr. McLavick, two questions. Uh, what kind of fund balance are you projecting?
I, I don't project any fund balance. You know, it's, you, really, you're always gonna have fun, you're always gonna have money because you're gonna request it from the city and county. So whatever your expenses are, you get reimbursed for most. Um, so really, I mean, you're, end of the year, 6/30/22, it was about $100,000.
Okay.
Yep. And of that, if you look on page seven, 66,000 was cash, and then accounts receivable is 26, and that was the money that came from the city and county right after the year that was for the previous year, for this year that we're, that we're talking about, so...
Okay, so the net profit that we had a year ago, that we dedicated X number of dollars to pay, help pay for the comprehensive plan, is not included in...
It's, it's always included because it's leftover cash. It's leftover cash. That's what, that's what, that's what's in the reserve or the fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Mr. McLavick, did you find that all the internal controls that we had to accept?
Yes, yes.
Did you also find that there was no evidence of any non-compliance or any...
Well, we did not. And if there was, we would let you know. If there's any improvements, we would tell you as part of our, our job is not to find fraud as any order. A lot of people think that, but if we were to find something, we would go above the first level, come to the commission and say, hey, you know, the head of the commission say, hey, I just want you to know, we found some issues. Uh, but any, anytime we find a, a, a recommendation for a control that could be improved, with such a small office, it's kind of hard to, but you have somebody from the city reconciling the books and everything's put together for us, so, um, that's the biggest control that there is, is not one person. Unfortunately, with small entities, usually you do have one, but I would say, as a board, make sure you're reviewing every expense, every check that goes out. It should be approved and somebody should look at it. Um, but always with a small, one or two people in charge of everything, every, you know, the board, you know, should be reviewing it. And you all do it, you get the, the bills presented to you every, every month, so. And we check that. We make sure that they're, it's part of our due diligence, we make sure that they are presented.
I ask that question only because there are those that watch on TV that definitely get to read your audit.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Um, you got one?
Yeah, I mean, just talking about this is kind of interesting. So we, we do approve the bills each month.
Yeah.
And so is, through your review, do you look at that, that law, that list of things that was, was approved and then what was actually put into, you know, in terms of actual payments?
Yeah, you don't have, I mean, you all know, you don't have many expenses.
Right.
Um, but, uh, there is a log and you can see additional items that are added, and we can see those in the minutes. Part of our, part of our audit procedures are reviewing board minutes. So we do review. Now, I would say, you know, you, though, we usually review those first because we would see, for instance, a year and a half ago, hey, we know there's gonna be a big expense because they just approved the comprehensive plan. How's it gonna be funded? So we can expect large expenses coming, so that would be the one thing that we would make sure. Or if there wasn't anything, we'd say, hey, you all approved the comprehensive plan, supposed to have, you know, $100,000, $50,000 expenses, why wasn't there? Well, because we got started late, we're gonna have them in the next year. So those are the things that we kind of, we look for when we read the board minutes, so, yep.
Any others? Just anything off the top of your head with a small staff, it's hard to do segregation of duties.
I always say, somebody on the commission that's above review. And ask questions. Why did we write a check to Ed Logan twice this month? It's because we didn't pay him last month. I mean, that's, that's something that you would ask, just again, you just, why is Charles T. Mitchell company's, you know, bill not in here? Well, they haven't presented it to us yet, you know, and that's just something that you would do. And most, a lot of times, associations, being in the capital city with so many associations, you always have two or three people, and I, every time I present, I say, the best thing you can do is review. Somebody, usually it's a treasurer or the chairman of the board, will review the bank statement and just make sure there's nothing odd on there. Something as simple as that, compensating controls is what we call it. I mean, it'd be nice if you had seven people, one person wrote the checks, one person signed the checks, one person made the deposit, another person, you can't do that, so you just have to have compensating controls.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other items that the staff may have?
Mr. Chairman, um, I would offer a motion for consideration that the planning commission accept the audit report from Charles T. Mitchell for fiscal year 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion back Commissioner, back Commissioner Jackson, second back Commissioner Swager. So, okay, no discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sam, oh, don't hear, sorry. Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you for your work to our staff and next item, are there any...
Mr. Chairman, I, I want a clarification if you don't mind. Mr. Logan.
Yes.
Um, is there a need to, and I'd prefer it at the end of the meeting as opposed to now, if we wanted to get a, a clarification and update on, uh, any legal issues that might be confronting a commission, do we need to go into executive session? Or can you just...
I know of no legal issues that are confronting us, so I would say no, but if you have any specific questions, um, we think we can answer those.
Well, I, I got noticed that we had been sued.
The commission has been sued as a part of a request with regard to open meetings. There is no individual liability. As a matter of fact, I think the statute poses a $100 fine if we acted inappropriately. Uh, the only thing would be attorneys to sit the court until it was. So the suit has been filed, and I have answered on behalf of the commission, and that's the, the update, I don't mind saying that, an open meeting or any places.
Okay.
I see no reason to go executive session.
Okay, well, that was...
If something comes up in the second question, that may change.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, sir.
And you've answered. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, any old business? CNN, I guess we'll ask, we'll go into new business, and I'll ask the secretary to call the first item.
Yes. Um, public hearing, 954 Wilkinson LLC is requesting a zone map amendment from High Density Multifamily District RH to General Industrial District IG for the 3.75 acre property at 954 Wilkinson Boulevard. The property is more specifically identified as PVA member number 061-00-00-08-0.01. If you're going to speak or, or testify, you need to sign in and be sworn in.
Has everyone had an opportunity to sign in that wants to?
Not yet.
No?
Just sign your name here. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you write a small zero?
Can you sign just right?
No, just write, yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Will you stand and raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Cockley, if you state your name for the record, please.
Eric Cockley.
And what's your position with the city?
I am, uh, the director of the city's planning and community development department.
And have you found previously a veto with the commission as to your training education experience?
I have.
And as a result of your position as director and based upon your training education experience, have you reviewed an application for us tonight from 954 Wilkinson LLC?
I have.
And did you reduce your review to a report and recommendation?
I have.
Are there any additions or additions to the report that's been previously prepared by the commission?
Nope.
Any updates that you want to give the commission to briefly indicate what your analysis and response to the review of the proposal?
I can just briefly explain the request if that works. Uh, the request was for a zone change, uh, for this piece of property. You may, uh, recognize it. We processed a zone change on it a couple few years ago to go to the present zoning of RH for proposed multifamily development. This request is to go from RH to IG, General Industrial, um, in order for these fine folks back here, um, to open a small craft distillery with tasting room and retail shop on the facility. You had my report, we sent it out to the TRT, got no negative comments, um, I have positive findings, and I'm recommending approval.
Thank you. Any, uh, does the commission have any questions of Mr. Cockley?
One question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Um, in the, in, in the staff report, it indicates that the property itself backs up to a neighborhood there, and I think I counted about eight properties there that it abuts. Were all of the owners in that neighborhood with property that abuts the, the, uh, proposed, uh, property for the zone change notified?
Yes, we sent, um, as per our normal, um, procedure, they all received adjoining property owner notices, or should have, they were mailed, uh, two weeks ago.
Did you receive any response from any of those neighbors?
Uh, the only neighbors that I've heard from was a gentleman, uh, that owned Jim Seafood called me, just asking what the, the, the proposed use was. I shared that information with him and he sounded supportive.
One last question, if you don't mind. When you go into the neighborhood and it's, you know, just a straight street, turn right, go up the hill, then you gotta come back out, but is there access, appropriate access to that property from that neighborhood that you're aware of?
From Frazier?
Yeah.
Uh, no, there's currently not access to this property, uh, between this property and the residential neighborhood. I believe there's a vacant parcel that, I was gonna say previous owner, the current owner parcel, uh, purchased with the intent of possibly making a connection there when we were looking at the, um, the multifamily development because of our, our regs, they were, they were possibly gonna need a second connection. Um, my understanding is that, that, uh, that parcel isn't necessarily part of this transfer, and they have not suggested in their concept plan, uh, that they're going to attempt a connection to the neighborhood. Based upon the scale and scope of the project, there's no reason that the regs, I believe, would require one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commission members? All right, thank you. I now ask the applicants to come forward and present their case, please. If you don't mind, just state your name for the record, please.
I'm Christopher Vivas.
And I'm Nathan Brown.
And, uh, do you agree with the findings of Mr. Cockley? And if you have any other questions for us, we'd be welcome.
Mr. Swager.
Could you just give a description of, I mean, we heard it, uh, Mr. Cockley's description?
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that they're sworn, they're gonna give testimony?
I'm so sorry, I jumped ahead.
I did.
They did.
Did you do it earlier?
They did, but I thought I...
I didn't hear it.
I, I was gonna say, they, they did a very quick, uh, presentation, and so I moved, I went ahead and moved down, so I thought maybe you were gonna come back, but they, they're quick. That's the kind of presentation we want.
Basically, we're, we're going after, sorry, you guys...
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay. Um, we are, uh, have, have had an application for, uh, the trademark Daniel Boone since, uh, March of last year, and it's in sort of that approval process with the Patent Trademark Office, um, right now. So the intention is to try to open a Daniel Boone distillery at that location, and we just feel that, um, Frankfurt is the right place. He's buried right up on the hill over here, looking at the Capitol, and, uh, Frankfurt is Kentucky distilled and, and, uh, it's kind of your all's motto, so there just seems to be a lot of synergy with, there's just a critical mass within this area of, of, um, distilleries and bourbon and things like that, so it just, uh, the location just seems kind of ideal, looking over the Kentucky River, next to an iconic, you know, Buffalo Trace is right, right, right on the street. Um, so that's, and that's basically why we're here.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, well, I just wanted to see if you could describe, you have a, on the, on the plan that we have, it shows a 5,000 square foot building.
Right.
Just describe what your intentions of...
So the intentions are, if you'd imagine, it's kind of, right now, the concept is, I guess, the, the architectural vocabulary would be maybe a, um, a throwback to sort of a, almost like a tobacco barn kind of vernacular, but maybe in a modern sort of sense that looks out, that has a storefront that looks out, sort of like a glass wall, you're looking past sort of copper stills, and you're in a space that's, um, has basically bourbon barrels in it, and that's kind of a tasting room and where the, the, sort of the craft distillery is, and then there'll be some, some back of house bottling and, and things like that. So it's kind of, just kind of starting out small with that, with that, and then grow as we can to possibly put some barrel storage and some other things like that there, and, um, that, that kind of paints a picture that's...
Put it in a retail shop.
Yes, yes. I mean, we would, actually, we would add to the, you know, we would basically, as we have product, we would have some retail, we'd be obviously trying to sell, uh, a Daniel Boone bourbon is our main offering, and then any accessory sort of, you know, glasses, hats, you know, things like that, that's, that you would typically see in a, in a distillery, you know, those.
Sure. Do you have any further?
No.
Okay. Mr. Wright, and then Mr....
This, this may not be an issue that you brought up here, but I, I find it kind of marketable. You think you're gonna be able to get Daniel Boone trademarked that easy? That name's been around forever and nobody's tried that? I mean, I...
It's, uh, we're in, we're, we...
I might see Daniel Boone Distillery maybe, but Daniel Boone himself, that'd be a coup that you could, that's...
It's, it's a gamble, um, and so right now, they've approved it, and now we're in a 30-day, um, opposition period with the...
Right. Yeah, okay, that's, but now, do you, do you think that, how long it'll be, I, I should, being in Frankfurt, I should have an idea of how long it takes. When, when do you think you might have your first bourbon? What's that, about, is it five years minimum? What?
So we have some barrels that are already aging, so we've, we've done some contract distilling already, so we've aged some barrels already, so we have product that is aged. So we're, our goal is to have a premium, you know, premium, super premium bourbon that's, you know, six years or older, um, is, is gonna be our main offering, so we're trying to figure out that whole, uh, sustainable model with the barrels and all that stuff.
So you, right now, you don't, it doesn't appear to be, given this, that you don't have a lot of expectation. Immediately have a lot of tourism there, but there doesn't seem to be many parking or parking slots or, or...
Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna kind of...
You'll ease into that, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna ease into it and just kind of get it, it's just the two of us and it's kind of a, we're gonna just kind of scale it up as we, as we, as we have the funds to do so and, and as it moves, so...
Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure.
My question, piggybacks on chairman, or ex-chairman, right? Um, more on the timeline of opening, uh, where you are in your process. Also, you mentioned something about waiting on the trademark, so, hey, do you have your distilling license currently?
We do not have the distilling license currently.
Okay. Uh, do you know what the timeline would be to get that?
So, we're looking at possibly May of next year.
Okay.
Where we would be opening.
Do you have a rectifying license currently?
We do not. We do not.
Um, you also mentioned that, uh, at least it seemed that the business plan was contingent on getting the name, Daniel Boone name. Is that true, or if you didn't get the trademark, would you discuss...
We have, we also have other names that we have trademarked as well for our distillery and a bourbon, and my, my partner Nathan here, he, he was one of the founding members of Blue Brass Distillers as well, so this isn't his first rodeo, so to speak, as far as this, so he knows, he knows the ropes and, and I think we have a pretty clear picture of what we need to do to kind of open this thing.
Give you an explanation. I wish you all the best.
Yeah.
With this property's been sitting, we, we approved this two years ago and it's been just kind of sitting idle.
Yeah.
So, that being said, we would love to see something happen with it, and I think your idea's great, just everyone's seeing it five years down the road, I want to say it's been your time period.
No, time is money for us. As soon as we can get this thing up and going is, is our intent. So we have, we have product to sell, it's just as, as soon as we can get, um, you know, the thing built and all the licenses and all the packaging and TTB approvals and approvals for the labels and all those, there's a few hoops to jump through, but we're, we're going after it.
As far as, if I may, uh, the, the timeline for actually obtaining those licenses is, is faster than, than our site, our site work and, and building would take, so, um, we were perhaps a little bit ambitious, we were trying to open this summer, but, uh, that's, but no, we, we are not planning on letting paint dry, as they say, we're trying to get this open.
Any others? Except one historical question.
Sure.
If you're going to use a likeness of Daniel Boone, are you gonna use historically accurate one or the movie version?
No, we wouldn't, so the Kuhn Skin Hat thing, we're, we're the only, the only thing that, that, that we don't, we, we, we want it to be as authentic as possible and as classy as possible.
And that has no bearing on anything, I just...
Yeah.
Question of the story.
Yeah, we realize that Hollywood has kind of done him a disservice.
Seth Parker?
Yeah, festival about 6'5", wasn't it? Yeah, it was about...
The chatter he was asking about, so, so I was talking about Seth.
We were asking exactly what likeness Bill had in his mind that he was.
Most people think of the Kuhn Skin Hat and pretty much everybody...
See, I knew that was there, because...
Yeah, there's only actually one known, like, image where he actually sat for an artist, and that was like almost right before he died.
And he's not... And he's not wearing a hat?
Yeah.
I'd say that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any others? Fest Parker, Fest Parker. You said Seth Parker, but you said Fest.
Fest Parker, yeah, he was a big guy.
All right, I think that that's all we need for you, but I wanna ask if there's anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on this item. And seeing none, I think at that point, if everyone has spoken, then I'll ask for, uh, anyone to make a motion if they would like to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer the motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion back.
Well. I'm gonna try and, and incorporate a few things so that, uh, our secretary won't have to call the rogue so often. Uh, that the public hearing be closed, that the staff report be adopted as a summary of the public hearing. And with the permission of legal counsel, I would also, uh, propose that we take action on this item at tonight's meeting. I'll do the rest later.
Great.
In a minute.
I think that's okay.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Cross, to close the hearing and then we'll take action on the item tonight. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call her over.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman May?
Yes, item, uh, that motion is adopted.
Okay.
The item is before us, if anyone would like to make a motion on.
Uh, we need to do one more thing before a motion is made on whether to make the, uh, zone change or not. I offer the motion that we adopt the findings of fact that are found on page ten of eleven of the staff report as the finding of fact for, uh, the requested zone change.
Second.
So you voted to present all.
One, two, three, and four.
Okay, so all four findings of fact. And second by Commissioner Cross, is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call her over.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman May?
Yes. The findings of facts, one through four of the staff report have been adopted. Now is there further?
Okay, and, and I got to do an interim motion.
Okay.
That findings of fact cease.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Cross, that findings of fact cease, any discussion on said motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call her over.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman May?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That motion is adopted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, offer as a motion that the request of nine fifty-four Wilkinson LLC for a zone map amendment from high-density multifamily district RH to general industrial district IG for the three point seven five acre property at nine fifty-four Wilkinson Boulevard be recommended to the city commission for adoption.
Motion by Commissioner Jackson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cross. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call her.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman May?
Yes, that motion is adopted. Congratulations, that's your first step before you go to the commission, which should be, you know, hopefully no problem.
Excellent, awesome.
Thank you for your very concise.
We can't start distilling this afternoon? We can't start distilling this evening?
You can start distilling if you go, nobody sees you. You can always start.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is, the, the second item on the agenda tonight, uh, was removed from the item? I guess will be considered at a, at a future meeting.
Please.
So is there any other business for the commission?
I would, I have a question, uh, from. Is, is there a plan, is that zoning update committee, has that been advertised for next, is that gonna be next? It's on the, only talked about housing?
Twenty-third?
Two seconds, George was linked in the legal agenda paper the other day, not coming out on what day?
I thought it was gonna be the week, two weeks from today, week twenty-third?
Are you on advisory or steering? Advisory or steering?
No, this is gonna be a zoning update committee, this is gonna be involving.
Oh, hello.
Zoning update?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank, thank you. Any others? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Lusher, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, let's have it.
Good job.
Thank you all, that's quick. Next one I'm gonna bring.